Yes, one, two. Okay, first of all, I want to thank everyone who has come to our first city council meeting tonight of the new year. Myself, all the councilmen, whether old or new, I know they all welcome each and every one of you here tonight, too. Hopefully, you've picked up an agenda to see where we're going tonight. Not sure how long we'll be here tonight, but you're welcome to be here. You're welcome to speak when your time comes, and appreciate your attendance. For those who don't know me, I'm John Black. I'm now your mayor of LaGrange, and I certainly appreciate the honor that's been bestowed upon me to serve this city for the next four years. I'm sure the council folks would say the same thing, and we're just all glad to be here tonight. I would ask you, if you would, before the meeting starts, please silence your phones, if you would, for us, or put them on vibrate, and then if you need to make a phone call that's important to you, I would ask you to probably excuse yourself from the room to make that call. What I would like to do at this point in time is for all of us to stand and say our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Yes.
Everyone's been sworn under oath to do a good job, correct?
Yes, sir.
And do as we should do. Since this is the first meeting of the year, there are going to be some appointments made tonight, and there's different ways you go about it, but I've tried my best to look at the statutes that govern KRS 83080, and also our local code of ordinances that we have presently on the books of our city. We will have four, what I consider, non-elected officers appointed tonight, and they all need to be duly sworn. And the first one, who is coming back to the city from previous number of years of service, is Stephanie Cooper. And with that being said, before I do that, I would like to go ahead and allow Stephanie to go ahead and have a roll call vote to bring this council into session. So Stephanie, if you would do that, I would like to have a roll call vote to understand who's all present tonight.
Trey?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Here.
Andrea?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Phil, I'm sorry, Phil.
Well, you should be. I'm here.
Debbie?
Here.
Elsie?
Here.
Okay, that being said, we have a full quorum, so now, at this time, the city council night is now in session. Okay, our first appointment tonight to bring to the city council is Stephanie Cooper. I think most of the city council knows Stephanie's service to the past in this city, has done a great job, I feel. And in trying to get these officers out to the city council members, by the law of the city ordinances, I was required to send them 10 days' advance notice on everyone who I'm attempting to appoint tonight. It says it in our code of ordinances, I'm to give them 10 days. They, first of all, submit a letter of interest to me and also a resume. I have followed that code of ordinance as well as I can, so I've sent those all out. And by doing that, what it was allowing to be done, to make sure that each council member had the opportunity, the ability, to look into anything they chose to do about any one of these appointments. I think that's the intention of the 10-day rule. I followed that, and I wanted to make sure that any council person had the needed time to make sure they understand each and every appointment I have before you tonight. So with that being said, back up a moment. And please, we're going to make some mistakes here tonight, but what I would do first, and I thought I would do this for sure, is ask for approval of the agenda. Is there anyone, anyone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Some.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bill. We have a motion, a second on the table. It's now open for discussion. Anybody wish this discussion motion on the table?
Can I make a second motion, or only on this particular motion?
At this point, I guess I can entertain a second to the motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to revise the agenda order, moving items 13, 14, 15, and 16 up to, between items, the current items, 3 and 4. So that would be the approval of the December minutes, payables for December 2018, financial reports, and the public comment portion up to, in between items 3 and 4.
Trey, is that 13 through 16? Is that the three you're moving, or four you're moving?
Yes.
You want to move 13, 14, 15, and 16?
Up to, in between items 3 and 4, current items 3 and 4.
Underneath item 3?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
I've got a motion on the table, and a second. They're going to back their motion back.
Elsie, you want to withdraw your motion?
(inaudible).
Are you, will you withdraw your motion?
Why?
Because Trey, your councilperson has asked you to consider doing that.
I think we need to take my motion first and then take the other motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Take one motion and then the other motion.
Further discussion on Elsie Carter's motion to approve the agenda. If not, Stephanie will take a roll call vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented tonight, let me know, saying aye. Just do a roll call vote, Stephanie.
Trey?
No.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Andrea?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Debbie?
No.
Elsie?
Yes.
What did you do?
Five no, three yes.
Okay, Mr. Kammer, would you please state your motion again for me?
Try to restate it. Okay.
And get a second to it, please?
I'll do my best. So it's taking items 13, 14, 15, and 16, and moving those up in order in between items 3 and 4.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I guess I'll ask Mr. Kammer, by grouping those all four together like that, what's your reasoning for that?
Just primarily based on, to my experience with council, so this is the start of my fifth year. Typically, we will go over the minutes from the previous meeting, and then go over the financials, well, the payables and the financials, and then any public comment that we have before we start the meeting. It's just been my experience over the past four years.
That's your experience, but I'm the mayor, and this is what council I presented, and I guess I'm okay with what you're saying is, but to group all four of them together. But if you choose to just let public comment go up there, I'll even allow that, if you're not worried about the other three right now.
It's not, I guess, at this point, with my motion, it's moving all four items just up to the front. So typically, after we've had a meeting, we just go over the minutes from before. So I'd like to move all four items. They're not bunched together. They're still independent items, just moving them up in order.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Do what Trey Kammer's asked. Okay, do a roll call vote, Stephanie. All those in favor of Trey's motion, let me know, saying aye.
Trey?
Yes, or aye, sorry.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
I will acquiesce to a yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Elsie?
No.
Seven yes, one no.
Okay, that's affirmation of that. Thank you all for that. Okay, so that being said, that's how the agenda will move forward. If you can move all those up there for me, Stephanie, I'll tell you. You tell me when the next one's ready to go, okay? So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and put in the nomination and appointment of Stephanie Cooper for your city clerk to serve the next two years. In looking at the law, these appointments run concurrent with the same time period as does the city council, who was elected in November, and that'd be two years.
That's not the way the vote went, Mayor. The vote went for these four items to go after 3.
Is that correct, Trey?
Correct.
Yeah, but I have to get a city clerk sat here to take the minutes, and furthermore, I need to get a city attorney up here at this table as soon as I can to advise us on the law. If I don't have a city attorney advising all of us, and I don't have a city clerk that can take her minutes, then we're going to need to adjourn the meeting.
We've had a lot of--
All I'm asking for at this point, we can leave the other two appointments to whenever you all want to deal with them, but I need to get this lady and the city attorney approved as soon as we can. They'll have them sit and be legally sitting at this table. So I will allow, if your vote, Trey, if you let that occur, then the last two appointees can go after public comment, for whatever reason you want them going after public comment.
So if I hear you correctly, you're asking to do agenda number 4 and 5, and then skip to 13, 14, 15, 16, and then number 7. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Six, seven, six and seven.
Number six.
Six and seven, I'm sorry.
Are you talking to me, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
I'm able to put, I'll put open a public comment anywhere they choose, but I can't move it down as far that I don't have a city attorney up here, nor do I have a city clerk sworn in.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for, and the other two can go after public comment.
Okay. I'll make a new motion, just in the interest of having a clerk and a city council representation to move items 13, 14, 15, and 16 between items 5 and 6.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of Trey's motion, let me know, saying aye.
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 I don't think we have a second yet.
You got a second on it from Leslie? Motion made by Trey, second by Leslie.
Okay.
No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good. Okay, now, what we're going to do is get Stephanie appointed and sworn in here. So with that being said, who will make the motion or the denial to approve Stephanie Cooper to be our city clerk?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephanie Cooper, city clerk.
My second.
Okay, has a motion been made? Any discussion on the appointment? If not, no discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Stephanie. Now what I need to do is swear you in real quick, okay? Would you like to have a Bible to go with that?
Yes, sir.
I'll read this, and then I'll--
(inaudible).
"You, Stephanie Cooper, are due hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution is commonwealth, Kentucky, and the laws and the ordinances of this city of LaGrange, and will execute to the best of your ability the duties of the city clerk of the city of LaGrange, and the best of your endes according to law. You do solemnly swear that since adoption of the Constitution, you, being citizens of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state or out of it, nor have or sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have or acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted in any person who does offense, so help you God."
I agree.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you, Stephanie, and thank the city council.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. I'm glad they did that. Okay, tonight, also, I have a nomination and an appointment for our city attorney, as did Stephanie and the other appointments. You all received in your pocket a background, a resume, a letter of interest from Attorney Beach Cregmell. I think you will have seen that he's been involved with city litigation, serving as a city councilman in the city. He told me he's even rewritten the code of ordinances for the city of Pee-wee Valley from front to back. He did that as maybe not a city attorney, but as a council person. So he's very familiar with city law, and you have his information in your pocket. So my nomination to be our city attorney tonight for a period of two years is Beach Cregmell. Do I have a motion on the table? Would like to entertain one to approve Beach Cregmell. Would you like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm seconded.
There's a second? Any discussion on the motion to approve Beach Cregmell? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Come on up, Beach, swear you in, buddy. (inaudible). Okay, Mr. Cregmell, you, Beach Cregmell, do hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth of Kentucky, and the laws and the ordinance of the city of LaGrange, and will execute to the best of your abilities the office of county city attorney of the city of LaGrange to the best of your ability according to the law. You do solemnly swear that since the adoption of the Constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state or out of it, nor have or sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have or acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted in any person who does offense, so help you God. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
We also have a resolution here tonight. What's our resolution number on that? City of LaGrange, it's a resolution we need to pass for the approval of Beach to be our city attorney. It's Resolution Number 1, Series 2019, a resolution for appointment of a city attorney accepting acceptance of the personal service contract. Whereas the mayor of the city of LaGrange has authority pursuant to the provisions of KRS 83-130 and other law to accept contracts for personal services on behalf of the city that he finds to be in the public interest. And whereas pursuant to LaGrange ordinance code, the mayor has nominated a candidate to serve as the city attorney, and has provided his resume and proposed personal services contract for review by the city council. Whereas the city has considered the mayor's recommendation and approves of his recommendation and authorizes the mayor to execute a personal services contract for the appointment of said nominee to fulfill that role. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, that the mayor did hereby nominate, and the city council does hereby approve the appointment of Beach Cregmell as city attorney, and authorizes the mayor to enter into a personal services contract, the professional service of said attorney, for a term beginning January 7, 2019, through December 31, 2021, according to the terms of the said contract, a copy which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, so adopted and agreed by the city council of LaGrange and signed by the mayor on the behest of the council and for and on behalf of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, on this 7th day of January 2019. Who would like to make the motion to approve that Resolution 1?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 1, Series 2019.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made, and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? From anyone? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Congratulations, Beach. Good job.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say anything at this time?
I'll do my best.
That's all we can ask. Okay, now, what item do we have there with the move of those items, Stephanie? Okay, our next item will be our approval of our minutes from our December meeting. And I feel like that by having six new council members here tonight, and only two remaining ones, more than likely, those six that are here tonight will probably need to abstain, since you weren't at that council meeting, didn't have anything to do with it, and these really aren't your minutes. So you have the minutes before you, you've received them last Thursday morning, I believe, you've received your packets all last Thursday, so is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for December--
Okay, motion been made by Ms. Pollard, and is there a second?
A second.
Second by Trey Kammer. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed. Thank you so much. Okay, next item.
Payables.
Okay, the council should have gotten in their pockets the payables. Becca, at our, at our city, where's Becca at tonight? There she, not Becca, Heather, Heather Woodcock. She does a great job on keeping up these payables, and the bills do, so the council has those payables in their pocket. So if you've looked at them and had time to review them, is there a motion to approve the payables?
Motion to approve the payables.
A second.
December payables, sorry.
Okay, the motion been made by Trey Kammer, seconded by Mr. Davenport. Any discussion on the motion? Have you looked at them? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, tonight, we have another reappointment of, excuse me? What's that?
The next one.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The financial report is, you all have had that, so are there any questions or concerns about the financial report at this time, at this meeting tonight?
Mayor, I would like to ask you to get the new city council members a copy of the budget, this year's budget. I'm not sure that they all have that, so if you could do that, that would be great.
Be glad to do that. Yes, sir. Any questions on the financial statement that you had before you?
I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Thank you, sir. Any or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pollard. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. We may be out there by 8:30. What's the name? Wait a minute. Okay, we have appointment tonight for code enforcement.
Hold on, hold on, Josh.
Public comment.
Oh, it's all, it's all got pushed around there, so where--
Okay, so, public comment will be next.
The next item?
And then, yes.
And then Stephanie? Okay, Stephanie Winter and our point member chief, please, going after open comment, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, that being said, I'll lay this before the council. I see nothing on our books that's there that actually conducts a open comment hearing format. I know a lot of folks have come here tonight to speak about different topics. I, myself, do not want to set a time limit, myself, and try to say to people that I'm set a limit, it's not enough time. So what I'm going to do at this time is ask the council, it's pretty much ordinary customary to go three or four minutes, typically where I've seen it. And then, if you go three or four minutes, once we get this put into a resolution or an adoption or a way of doing business in LaGrange, everyone will know that, hopefully after tonight. But, so what I'm going to ask the council is, those who want to speak and public comment tonight, the way I'd like to see it done is they get to speak, and then, during that time period, if any of the city council or myself choose to react to anything they say, then I want to afford the council and myself that opportunity to do. Typically, in public comments, there's not going to be decisions made about, someone asks us to do something that we can't do tonight, we have to study it, but I would ask that we will have a public comment time decided by the council, how long you want it to be, and then, whatever time limit is, if someone needs more time to maybe try to explain what they're trying to say, then they would be granted an extension of every how many minutes the city council would like to give them, in addition to their original minutes that you all decide you want to give them to start with. So anybody would like to propose a time limit to give everyone the opportunity to speak during public comment, and the extension also?
Mayor, it would be helpful, I think, if we had some idea of how many people out there do want to come forward, and so we could maybe put a time on it. I mean, maybe every one of these people want to. That's, you know, you're looking at an hour and a half or two hours, so it would be good if they could raise their hand or something, give us some idea of how many people want to come forward.
How many here tonight want to come and speak during public comment? Well, that amount, I think you could go easily five minutes. What do you all think? It's up to you all. You all decide what the rule will be, and I will follow what you all say. Who would like to make a motion to put into the beginning of our discussion period how many minutes anyone and everyone's entitled to, to speak, and also maybe possibly with the extension, if you want to grant them that?
Five minutes, would you grant us an extension? (inaudible). I guess it's plenty of time, I shouldn't be getting an extension, but you don't know.
Okay, I think on the extension, Ms. Carter, is, that extension probably could be granted at the time, depending on how much time they want to ask they could get their thoughts discussed. They may ask you for, and you obviously say, do you need a minute? You need two minutes, but if you give someone six, they might just start talking about everything in the world, and so why do that? So who wants to make the motion as to how many minutes we want to allow for public comment?
I'll make a motion to grant the five minutes with an extension if needed.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Lambline. Is there a second to that?
I second that motion.
Okay, second by Ms. Bolton. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Okay? Okay, now it's time for public comment. We're not ready to go just yet, Jerry. I would ask everybody, if you're gonna speak, a lot of times you get in public comment and you hear a lot of things, same thing over and over. Try to keep the redundancy down to a point, if you've heard it, I don't know how many times the council needs to hear it, but maybe that'd be up to the council. Also, this is a time for you to speak what you need to say to the city council, and I think, Mr. Cragmell, do you have anything to add to the speaking in public as to any legal concern or something like that, as far as them speaking?
Well, I mean, this is not sworn testimony, it's just your opinion, so you're welcome to say whatever you want. It just has to be the truth, and that's, you know, we're not gonna swear you in, but it just, you know, just be aware of that.
Mayor, in the past, we've asked for the name and address of the people who speak.
Yes, sir.
Usually been stated, no personal attacks also, we usually state that, that's procedure, it's up to the council, whatever y'all want to do, but that's, that's.
Well, I think, I think hopefully anybody who would come forward will not be tacking personally on anybody.
I know, but you just got to throw it out there, I don't expect either, but that's part of it.
Okay, with that being said, who would like to go first and speak to the council?
Jerry Rankin, 1152 Peony Way, LaGrange. You have four previous mayors on this board and one previous county judge. Right off the bat, you had a motion that was made and seconded, and then somebody else tried to come in and make another motion. You can't do that. You either make an amendment to the motion, vote on the amendment, and then go back to the original motion and vote on it. You cannot make, have two motions on the floor at the same time.
They did, and that first guy withdrew his motion.
Well, not before a second motion was being made. It was, the withdrawal came after, so, read your Robert Truitt's regulations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rankin. Who would like to go next? Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
I'm Rick Noel, 1180 Pattens Creek, Pendleton, Kentucky, I own the Old Oak Frame House, the oldest business in LaGrange. I would like for the city hall to consider limiting heavy trucks on Main Street, 18-wheeler's and trucks pulling bulldozers and large farm equipment combines, things of that nature. The reason, it's a safety hazard. It's a busy business district, and there are small children sometimes, you know, coming out between cars, and heavy trucks cannot stop very rapidly, and I would really not want to see a small child run over. So, that's what I would propose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Noel. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't catch that gentleman's name.
Richard Noel, Noel, Ricky Noel.
Ricky Noel, and his father drove a tanker for thirty-some-odd years.
Wait, wait, before you go that route, what's your name and where do you live?
Richard W. Rankin, Senior, 519 Horton Road, LaGrange, Kentucky.
Where's he?
We had this problem once before. I've drove for thirty-six years for Let's Go Design, manufacturer out of LaGrange, Kentucky. You cannot stop a semi from going down Main Street. We need to stop this before we get started, no further questions, ifs, ands, and buts about it. This was brought up when Ms. Carter was mayor, of trying to stop semis from going down Main Street. People, you can't do it, so just mark it off your books. I go down it many times. I've let Mr. Black cross the street a couple of times, but you can't do this. I don't know where he's coming from, how he's coming from, but you can't do it. Businesses have semis go down there and stop and unload and load, you can't do that, you just can't do it. They're talking, I've heard this, that fifteen, twenty mile an hour down Main Street, I ain't seen a semi driver yet that run a semi down Main Street fifteen, twenty mile an hour. You don't do it, either you're not a driver, you know. There are stop signs there, you gotta make a right turn there on Main Street, I go around by the police station to get me a good straight shot when I'm driving a semi. You know, it's something that was brought up years ago by Ms. Carter, somebody brought it up, you can't do it. I don't know where he's coming from, but his daddy drove for years, and I don't know where he's coming from, but he needs to go back. Thank you all. If you got any questions, you can come find me.
Now, you're finished. Sorry, Mr. Noel, but you can come back next time, and he just said what he had to say, and you said what you had to say, so the council heard what each of you said, and we will think about it down, you know, in the future and see what, what the importance of your asking for the restriction be, and why he says they have to go down Main Street, okay? Thank you all, both. Who's next tonight to come up for a public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name is David Newton, 1611 Road Court. An Olden County resident for the past twenty-three years, LaGrange City resident for approximately On behalf of myself, my family, and many of those in our community, like to welcome me back as mayor of LaGrange. And when you took the office and you put your name out there for a vote, you were counting on hearing the voice of the people. The people have spoken in the landslide, congratulations. I know you, you probably don't know me, but I bet you know my mom. She's worked with Tri-County Community Administration Agency, name is Vicky Newton, she always spoke highly of you. So when she told me John Black has good character, I believed her, so much so that I danced at my wedding in a building named in honor of you. Danced my butt off, had a great time. And it's an honor to have you as our mayor, and understand the new city council as it's formed for this next two years. You have a responsibility to bring LaGrange community to fiscal responsibility, try to do the best you can, and follow the will of the people. Thank you, and good luck for the next couple of years. I hope to be more of these.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, who would like to come and speak next?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, LaGrange, Kentucky, and I've lived here about ten years.
Is that the city of LaGrange or Olden County?
Well, I don't know, everything comes, it's considered.
No, I'm asking, are you a city of LaGrange resident, or you live out in the county, 1515 Dawkins Road? Where is that?
It's across from that exclusive gated community. The prison.
Okay, behind the prison? Okay, behind, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But everything I do is LaGrange, I've been a nurse here in LaGrange, I do art in LaGrange, I rescue animals in LaGrange, I do whatever I can do. But I've got to tell you that I've not been afraid living in this town until now. And I've heard your name, I've, you know, I know a lot of the people that are here, some new faces. But I think the way that the chief of police was let go, it threw me, and it threw a lot of people. And because you weren't even the mayor yet, and it was already, sounded like a done deal. And I've worked in hospitals for forty years in three different states, and the personality of the person at the top sets the tune and the flavor of everything else that comes down the pike. And if you have somebody that is open and appreciates what people do and tries to stay in touch with what's going on, you have an organization where people will work their butt off for you. Whereas if you have a place where they're out of touch, or they're in their office, or they don't really check to see what's been working and what hadn't been working, you just get new, a new administrator. It really affects an area. It affects a hospital, it affects a community. And my concern is, I don't know you, okay? I just am a person that trust my gut. And that premature thing with the chief, and, you know, and also, I mean, Mayor Joe was still the mayor, you know, I mean, he's, he was still in office, and it was like there wasn't really a lot of respect given to that. I don't know you, I hope to get to know you, but I just want to see that, that we all remain open with each other, and that we respect whatever job other people do. The chief of police gave, I felt very safe with him. He was knowledgeable, he loved the community. Mayor Joe ran a nice, calm, friendly ship, and it worries me when I see this type of static, because having worked in hospitals where, once the poop hits the fan, everybody's gonna be miserable for a while. I don't want to see that happen here, you know? I can tell you're working on getting this down and all of that, and I appreciate that, there's a learning curve to everything. But I just want to make sure that we stay the wonderful town that is LaGrange, because I'm gonna die here, okay? I'm sixty-nine years old, I want to die in a nice peaceful place, where I, where I know people, okay? So, all I'm saying is, please stay in touch with us, you know? If something needs to be done, if you can tell us why it's being done, that would really help, because this is a small town and people talk, okay? So I'd like to shake your hand. And, let's try to work together.
I promise I will.
Okay, I'll do my call.
The only comment I'd like to say about her testimony was, typically there are changes in leadership in different departments when the president takes over, when the governor takes over, when every county in Kentucky changes administrations, and with over four-hundred cities, mayors change administrations. That's not to say, ma'am, that Frank Conway's a bad guy by any means. That wasn't the point. He's not a bad guy, he's a good man. However, as I named those four offices, those office holders have the ability to do and try to put together the team that they feel and deem necessary to serve out what I project a vision to be. Nothing gets Frank Conway. The reason I went to him was, I don't like to drop things on people at the last moment. I was the incoming mayor, and I thought it was only fair to him to go see him early on, and I had every ability to do that, matter of fact, Kentucky League of Cities told me to do this, this way. You can go speak to him, but you don't have any authority to get rid of him, you don't have anything, you're not, you're not anybody. All you are is an elected mayor in November. So out of respect to Mr. Conway, I did go see him, and I told him my intentions. He understood them, I believe, and furthermore, I said, "Mr. Conway, I'm not gonna rehire you as my chief, I want to give you ample notice, because we're approaching the end of the year, you may choose to do something else." But I said, I told him, "You're welcome to stay with our LaGrange Police Department." I didn't have an obligation to go tell the president and mayor. That was between me going to be a mayor. Now, if he wanted to go to the mayor that was sitting and tell him what had occurred, that was okay with me. But that's what, how it got out. It was a conversation between himself and myself. I told him my intentions, I said, "Think about it, here's what's gonna happen, but you're welcome to stay here in the city of LaGrange fine police department." Some people walk in those situations, says, "You're gone outright. You're done." My father was done that way, under Governor Louie Nunn. He was awarded the state reformatory, he evidently was on the wrong political team, but my father understood. Change administrations, that can happen, okay? So, I tried to treat him as fair as I could, put him on notice, and I feel like he knew where I stood. That's all I can say. Who's the next speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Pretty, I live at 207 Washington Circle here in the city. I want to start out by thinking, all of our members of our police department, they all do a fine job and put their lives on the line every single day to make sure that we all live safely. In doing my due diligence as a citizen, you know, one of the things that came up, you know, we've just discussed, is the replacement of the police chief. I feel that we had a top-quality police chief, and that we should replace him with a top-quality police chief. In doing my due diligence with open records request, the nomination, I just don't feel, is up to par with that supervisory skills, trainings, community outreach, budgeting, all of those things, through looking through personnel files, I frankly don't see it. Giving most of you a copy of this, which is the open record check from Eminence Police Department, here's the LaGrange City one, there's some written reprimands in the Eminence one, there's a written reprimand in the city one. If we are gonna expect someone to lead our department, they should be able to follow the rules, and he's not following the rules. In his evaluations, there stated that there was some behavior, not behavior correction, job enthusiasm issues, some comments on his 2017.
What's, excuse me, what'd you say? What'd you say, what was there, issue?
I'll read it to you, word for word, if you'd like. Would you like that?
I just couldn't make out what that word was, you said something about an issue?
Enthusiasm?
Huh?
Enthusiasm?
Enthusiasm? Okay, okay.
And so, there were some things within his evaluations that kind of raised a blind eye. My issue is, is if we're passing up a major who has led our police department when the police chief was not present, why are we bypassing him when he is a qualified candidate? Why are we bypassing all these supervisors who are also qualified candidates for patrolmen who has no supervisory experience? That's my main concern. He may be a very nice man, I however have had a negative experience with him, but he may have changed his ways, and he may be a very nice man at this point, but I just don't see the qualifications at this point. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to come forward on open comment? Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna close the public comment session, and we'll go on to the next item. Our next item, Stephanie Winter?
Yes.
Is our code enforcement non-elected position. Once again, her resume was sent to all city council men and women ten days in advance, as required by law, so I think everybody knows our code enforcement lady, Stephanie Winter. All I heard, she's done, she's been here to do great things for our city. And all I wanted to try to do is, her title and our code of ordinances comes within our title, and it says it's a non-elected office. Stephanie and I have talked today, she says, "Mayor, my job description is so misleading, we gotta work that thing." It's got her writing citations, it's got her doing a lot of things that police do. She's not a sworn police officer. She's to go out and enforce the codes. So, agreeably, she wants to get with me as soon as we can and rewrite her job description. It needs to be addressed, so she knows what her abilities are in her job duties. So, at this time, you all have gotten her resume or letter of interest to be, continue to be our code enforcement officer. We will work on her job description just as soon as we can get to it, but she's done one heck of a job, far as I'm concerned, what I've seen taking place, so I would like to recommend to the council, Stephanie Winter, to remain our code enforcement officer-director.
John, I move to nominate or put her name in nomination for the code enforcement officer for the city of LaGrange.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Lambline, seconded by- seconded by Council Lady Debbie Pollard. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? I was in favor of the motion, let me know what you're saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all so much. Come on up, Stephanie. You can just stand down there if you wish to, and then after, I swear you can speak.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, just raise your right hand there for me. You, Stephanie Winter, do hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the laws and the ordinances of the city of LaGrange and will execute your duties as city LaGrange code enforcement officer to be the best of your ability according to the law. You also do follow and swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisting any person thus offending, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Call me anytime, but no, thank you.
She said, "Call her anytime."
Call me anytime.
So, 2:00 tonight, if you've got a dog barking, call Stephanie.
Doesn't mean I'll answer, but you can call.
She says she may not answer. My next appointment is the appointment of police chief for our city of LaGrange. And I take this very seriously. And I tell everybody, this appointment's on me. Not on this city council, even though they got approved. But this appointment I'm wanting to make tonight is on John Black. I'm the type of person who's hired many people, let some go, but they usually know where I stand. If a person doesn't do their job to the best of their ability, don't take care of the safety needs of this community, and I hear about it, I'll be the first person to tell that person, "You're no longer here." I know this young man, I call him a young man, I'm an old person, he's 44. I've seen him on the streets of LaGrange. I've heard people talk about how courteous he is, how he goes the extra step to get out of his car and talk to a little boy and say, "Would you like to have a police badge?" And the little boy wants to salute him, he salutes him back. I think this is a good man. For the comments, as you say, he's not ready. He's been a law enforcement officer for 19 years. You don't be a law enforcement officer 19 years and probably not make somebody mad at you. Any policeman sitting in here knows what I'm talking about. He came from the Shelby County Sheriff's Department for six years, the Eminence Police Department for a number of years, and been with this city 12 years. I've seen that personnel file you're talking about, saw it today. Open records by somebody, you, Oldamere, or somebody. I got a CD in my pocket and I looked at it entirely, page to page. What you said about this person, I didn't see what you said to the people, no, no, I didn't see that. I saw four different officers in the LaGrange Police Department that has given this guy his evaluations. Mr. Goodflesh is giving him one, Russell Roof's giving him one, Chief Conway's giving him one, and one other person that doesn't come to my mind right now. They say this, "An outstanding young man." I don't know if you've ever done an evaluation, but they usually go from 1 to 6. He might have had a 1, 3 in there, but I've done evaluations too. If you give everybody a 6 on their evaluation, what do they have to work towards to be better? These fellows, I can't think who the other police officer was that was signed to do his evaluations, but I saw him and I've got him here tonight. There's nothing in this man's record that should not allow him to be this police officer tonight for LaGrange. I take this seriously. And truthfully, everybody doesn't know everything when they take a job on. I've been hired on jobs and I probably wasn't the best qualified, but they said, "I'm going to put the faith in you, you might get there." I'm sure everybody in this room has been in on a job application and they may or not the best qualified, the most experienced, but we're going to give you a shot to prove it to us. And that's what I've seen this young man here. He's been with us 12 years, he's as clean and cut as they come, he's as courteous as they come, and yes, he's made a few people upset. I saw maybe one in there, and I think, I'm not sure it was you, but that's a problem of being a police officer. But my comments that I've seen from Mr. Goodflesh, Russell Roof, and the other person I can't think of right now, where they said, "This is an outstanding young man, he carries himself well." And I'll be glad, I see you're taking my picture right now to go on Facebook tonight, but I think it's an outstanding young man. So, I might have a few other things to say before this thing's over, but this is a council decision. It's not a public decision, we welcome your input, but these folks have had 10 days to do their own investigation of this young man. There's been a lot of things said that should not have been said on Facebook. It's a shame. We don't go there, we shouldn't go there. It's about his ability to do this job. It's not about his ability, what else he's done. I look at those things, and I don't see anything there that's been proven with substantial evidence to accuse this man of what he's been accused of. Well, Facebook does, okay?
I know what you're talking about.
Facebook is dangerous. It goes after people. It's got a lot of hatred to go with it. So, all I'm saying is, council, this man's on me. He's on my shoulders. If he acts up, he does wrong, now come to you say, "He's done." I ask you to give the man the consideration tonight. Frank Conway was a good man, I'm not going to deny that. But you, mayor, sitting here, no, yourselves, you have the ability to appoint the team you want in place. You all have done it, you have let people go. Yes, they had friends, but you let them go anyway. But they had friends, they said, "Why'd you do that to him?" Mayor, 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 the law says, "We have this ability to make these appointments as we choose them." It's our ability under the Constitution. I'll say lastly, this guy is on me. And I hope everybody here understands that. It's not on these folks, yes, they got to vote him up or vote him down here in a minute. But I'm telling you, this guy's on me. Anyone like to make the motion to approve David Stratton to be my police chief and your police chief?
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. Well, it's not my choice, it is the mayor's job to appoint the administrative staff, and we all know that.
Wait a minute, hold on. I need a second.
I'll second that.
You haven't got it.
Do you have a second? Okay, it's on the table for discussion. We have a motion to approve, and a second is open for discussion. Go ahead, Council Lady.
Well, I was going to say that it's not my choice, but it is your job to do this, and it will be on your shoulders. So, I would like to make the motion to approve David Stratton as the police chief.
Hey, you made the motion, we got a second. So, you're just, we're in discussion now.
Okay.
So, anybody's willing to discuss my nomination before the council for this man?
Yes, I would also like to add a little bit to what you just said about the Facebook thing and the people that actually contacted me. Some of it was dirty and nasty, and it was personal, and I think those people should be ashamed of themselves. I was following along till they got to the personal part, and then that's when I quit.
John, I also would like to say, I met with David, and he is a fine man. I have nothing against him, I think it's horrible that his life was put out there. I haven't seen a lot of it, but I think this city, we're here to represent this city, and I know you want transparency. I want transparency too, but his life, his personal life is not our business. He is going to be the chief of police under John's discretion regardless. I personally met with him, and then I called him back Sunday, and I told him how I was going to vote, that I did not want him to take it personally. I just do not feel like administratively, he is there. I think he's a great officer, I don't have a problem with that, but I want you to know how I feel about him. And I do think it's horrible that people keep putting these things on this media. I mean, it's getting so, I don't even want to pick it up and look at it, it's, what's going to be out there about me next? I mean, it's crazy. We're here to make this town to love one another and to make it the precious city that it is. And we work hard, and a lot of times, people don't realize that. People say things, and you have got to put hold in grudges. I mean, you know, I have been on here, yes, a long time, and I've been through a lot, but I'm going to tell you what, this last election has been the worst thing I have ever dealt with. And Bob, my fiancee for 26 years told me, if I didn't come down, that he was through. So, you know what, my family, God, is more important than gossiping about somebody else. Because somebody will tell you that David did this, and I'll tell her what they told me, time it gets back to Bill, it's a different story completely. I'm tired of it, I know that we need transparency, and I am going to put my faith in this council and mayor to try to work toward it. But David, I want you to know that I'm not going to vote you in as chief, and that's why, it's not you personally at all. It's just, I don't feel like you're there yet. Thank you.
I'm going to also speak to what Debbie just said. I know I'm new here, so some of you might not know me, but I have a small business in town. I am privy to a lot of people talking, and I just want to assure everyone that I make my decisions and will make my decisions, my votes, based on people's qualifications, their skills, their intelligence only. I will not make those decisions on their personal life. That's not my job to judge. And, you know, my vote's going to look like Debbie's tonight only because of the reasons that she said. I think personally, you sound like a great person. I'd love to meet you at my bakery sometime, but I think experience-wise, we could probably find someone with a little bit more experience, so just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
I'd like to finish up on what I said earlier. I am not going to vote for David this evening either. And the reason I'm not going to is because David told me personally that he feels like that he has been so maligned that he does not have the trust of this community nor the police force that he would be over. And he feels like that it would be bad for the city if he took office with those things around him and happening to him. So, David, I'm not going to vote for you either, but I know you're a nice guy, and I've known you ever since you've been in this city, and thank you for your service.
And thank you for being honest, we admire that. You were honest with the council about how you felt.
Did you say, council president, that he couldn't trust his police force he's worked with for 12 years?
No.
I meant, no bill.
He did not feel like he had the backing of the police officers that he would be in charge of.
Well, sometimes people rise up in a different situation. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but this is not the Los Angeles Police Department. We're talking about a police department of 13 people, maybe 14.
I just wanted to say as well that as a new council member and new to the political arena overall, and, you know, I've lived here just for a few years now, and I really love LaGrange. This was the first time that I've been disappointed in a lot of people's behavior and the malicious things that they have said about Officer Stratton and his personal life. I think it was completely uncalled for, and quite honestly, things that were said on Facebook have been pathetic. And I just want to agree with the other council members up here that that needs to stop, and that we need to come together as a community and be productive, not tear each other down.
Anyone else?
Just like to add just a little bit, I know it sounds repetitive, but I think we're all saying basically the same thing. I do appreciate you putting your name in there. I know when all of us ran for office, people say bad things about all of us, whether or not they're true or not. And I do respect, you know, you putting together your letter and resume for us to consider. I do appreciate the service that LaGrange Police Department has done as long as I've lived here my whole life. So, they've always done an excellent job. And I don't like the personal attacks either. Just to reiterate what everybody else has said, I don't think that's necessary or called for.
And I'd like to also say something. I respect John for running, I respect him for the years that I've known him and for the person he is. And I respect also the office of mayor and his ability to appoint these people. And if he appoints these people, it is his job to vet these people and to watch them and to make sure that they're doing everything right. And John will do that, I feel, from seeing him for the last 30 years. And I think that I respect him enough to vote for his choice.
I can only echo what the rest of the council members have said. Officer Stratton done a very great job under my administration. I've complimented him a number of times. But the feeling is, and just like Mr. Lamline said, we don't feel the support is there. The citizens have reached out to me. I know you have to listen to them, but that's not the reason I made my decision not to vote Officer Stratton in. We've had a long conversation, and I'm sure he understands. We've had a good working relationship, so that's, and my decision will be no to vote him as the chief also.
I'd also like to make a quick comment. Can you guys hear me? Okay. I also got a chance to talk with Officer Stratton. We had a fantastic conversation, our sons are the same age, he seems very, very personable. But during our conversation, you know, we did come to the conclusion that, you know, sometimes a job isn't worth the family and personal persecution that comes along with it. And, you know, I'm very sorry that things had to go that way. You know, true or not, everybody makes mistakes. We're not perfect, and I am sure not going to be one to look at somebody's choices or lies of choices and determine if, you know, they're suitable to fit a job or not. I need to look at experience, qualifications, and things like that, if that's the professional job. And we spoke, and it is by no means, you know, attack or an anti-mayor type of vote, because I think it's fantastic that you see somebody- vote, because I think it's fantastic that you see somebody, you see potential in them, and you want to rise them up. That's, I mean, that, that's a very important quality to have. And, you know, I absolutely appreciate that. But, you know, Officer Stratton and I did talk, and he does know what my decision is going to be, and it's nothing personal at all. And I wish him the best of luck continuing as a police officer. He obviously has what it takes. I mean, he got hit by a car at LaGrange Elementary, you know, watching out for students, you know, and, and came right back to work and does it again. Obviously, his heart is in, you know, serving people and serving the community, and really can't ask for much more than that. And I thank everybody here for their service. You know, putting your lives on the line every day for citizens like us is, can never go unappreciated. Thank you.
This is, this is half of this personnel file, the part that I thought I'd bring up tonight. You won't believe the accreditation certificates he's gotten from Kentucky State Police. This file is about an inch thick, and there's not one bad thing, if anybody looked this file, would say this guy is not able to do. I went to the police department today trying to find the lady who works there, and walked in the door, said, "Who's in charge?" David Stratton was there, and Russell Roof. Russell Roof says, "He's in charge, John. He's shift, shifts, shift whatever. He's in charge of this shift." Don't know how long Russell Roof's been with the department, know how long David's been there, but he told me, "This guy here is in charge." You look in this report by Conway, by Goodflesh, by Russell Roof, they say this guy can handle the situations on the street. He's got good street sense, and this is a 13-person department. It's not Los Angeles Police. I think with 20 years of experience under his law enforcement belt, facing all situations, and that's not to say he'll call on one of these fellows here to be his immediate assistant. If he wants it, I'll let that happen. I want to keep continuity in this department. He's a person in our department. I'd love to keep it in our department for LaGrange, in our police department. And you're not going to find anything in here bad. This, what I got off a disc today, and whoever the disc came from, it was delivered to me, whoever did the open records request. I couldn't find anything bad about this man. I think 13 men with one of these fellows helping him, if he needs it. No one knows the job entirely when they sign up. They just say, "Give me a chance. I know this business. This guy has street sense. He has calmed the situation." I don't know if this is about himself that much, or it's about somebody else. I'm not sure. But to deny this guy when he's got a record that he has, then you turn him down tonight, I have to go try again. But I ask you one last time. This guy's on me. Give him the chance to let him be on me, and I'll prepare him the best of my ability. I've hired a lot of chiefs. I've dealt with a lot of police budgets, and this guy deserves a chance. Keep this chief in this department. So if everyone's said all they need to say, Stephanie?
No, I have not. Thank you. I appreciate what you're saying, John, and I couldn't agree with you more. My vote is based on what I was asked to do by David, and...
What, excuse me. Clear that up for me.
I will clear that up for you. David felt like that he would not have the support of the men of the police department and this city, that it would be the wrong thing to do for him to be voted in as the police chief, because it would just create havoc. That's my word, not his. Now, I'm willing to change my vote to a yes, but I think Mr. Stratton has a right to come up here and speak.
Hey, hold on. I hear what you're saying, and you're right. But I guess in a month's time, if you get beat up every way from here to there, either by people close to him, Facebook, rhetoric that's not true, sometimes you say, "What's, what's it worth? Is it worth it?" And I think that's sort of where he's gotten to, but I've tried to keep his confidence up. It's about leadership. I said, "Step up," and everybody's going to have that resentment of somebody I named. I'm saying this is 13 or 14 good police officers that he has to be in charge of. I ask you again, he's on me. He's not on you guys. And I'll be the first to say, if he acts up tomorrow afternoon, I appoint him tonight, I will let him go. I want him to be the chief. I want him to choose, hopefully, someone in here to be his right-hand person. And I think we can do that. Anyone else like to have him, offer him more discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead and call a roll, Stephanie. This, this roll call is to approve David Stratton to be the police chief. Once again, everything about him is on John Black, and I'll take the responsibility for him.
Respectfully, no.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Andrea?
No.
Bill?
No.
Debbie?
No.
Elsie?
Yes.
Two yes, six no.
Okay. Let's move on to the next topic. Thank, thank, thank everyone. David and Mrs. Stratton, thank you all for being here tonight as well, and the LaGrange police officers. Okay, if you have in your pocket the approval, I went ahead and did this. Make sure everybody knows who we have working in our city administration. So you should have in your pocket a, a name of everyone employed here, and I'm asking for the approval that all these folks continue to work for the city at their present salary, and we move on and let them know they're still fine employees of our city. It's a motion to approve our employees at this point.
I'm making a motion that we approve the city employees of LaGrange.
I second it. A motion made by Ms. Pollard, second by Ms. Carter. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, if not, if not, I don't know.
John, John, excuse me. I was just noticing on the paper that you gave us, City of LaGrange Employees. I'm not sure if it was in response to the appointment of Officer Stratton, but I do not see his name on the police department page, and I just wanted to make sure that we do add that.
I will make sure tonight that we add David Stratton as a continued police officer.
Okay.
I thought I was going to get him named as police chief, so I didn't want to name him as an employee.
Okay.
So David Stratton, you've got a job, I hope.
Just did not want to forget him.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Do we have a motion? A second on that? All in favor of the motion? Let me know. Rehire our employees with us now? Let me know. I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. We have, tonight, we have three vacancies on our Historical District Commission Board. For you don't know, we have a, do have a Historical District Commission in our city, and we had three folks either moved out of town, resigned, retired, or said they would not like to be reappointed. So in doing this, I spoke with every person that I'm going to appoint here tonight with the council's approval, and they themselves were entitled and given a resume, a letter of interest as why these people would like to serve on the LaGrange Historic District Commission. Some of them will be finishing out the terms of someone whom they're replacing, but I have three nominees before the city council. The first nominee is Dottie Hedy. Dottie lives on Fourth Street in the historical district. I think that's important. If you're going to make rules and regulations, it's, I'll try my best to put people on the boards that have to deal with those same regulations. It won't always happen that way, because there's other good people outside those districts, but Dottie lives on our historical district, so at this time, I'd like to place her name and nomination to be serving on the Historic District Commission Board. You all have got her resumes and her interest letter.
I make a motion to approve Dottie Hedy as a member of the LaGrange Historic District Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on Dottie Hedy? All who's in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next appointment to that board, as you've got in your pocket, will be Larry Chandler. If you don't know Larry, you've seen all of his things in your pocket. Larry lives on Kentucky Avenue in the historical district. He's a retired warden at Kentucky State Reformatory, and he has led this inmate work detail through this city for the last number of years in painting the locomotives and all the train cars at, at the Train Museum. If you haven't seen them, they're beautiful, and he led that detail there. He's painted the History Center with inmates. He's painted the chapel with inmates. So Larry is very involved in our city. Is it for, for, I don't know exactly what his address is. It's on Kentucky Avenue in the historical district. He loves history, and I think he'd be a good member of that board to serve. So who would like to make the...
I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Larry Chandler as a member of the LaGrange Historic District Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all who's in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Third appointee is Angie, Angela Campbell. She lives right on Main Street, right at the crossing of, of Main Street and Cedar. Angie's lived in the historical district for long as I can remember. She used to live on Kentucky Avenue for years, and she no longer lives there. I think she sold that. She moved in another historical house. So my third nomination would be Angie Campbell to serve the term of Jeremy Esposito. Speaking of Jeremy Esposito, don't know if you know him or not, but he stepped off these boards. He served so well to help our city out in historical preservation, downtown movement. But his little boy, Christmas Eve, didn't have good balance, and he had severe headaches. He took him to have a, took him to have a scan. He has a, had a tumor on his brain, size of a tennis ball. So please pray for Jeremy and that little boy. They've got a plan of how to attack this issue, but he said, "John, I've got to tend to my business and tend to my family." And I said, "I understand, Jeremy." So this is who's going to replace Jeremy Esposito, and everyone keep Jeremy in your prayers. So that'd be Angie Campbell. She's here with us tonight. She may want to speak if she gets chosen.
John, I'll move to nominate Angie Campbell acres as a member of the Historic District Commission.
I'll second that.
All righty. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that, that nomination? If not, all who's in favor of the motion?
There is a discussion. The only discussion is, is we do have a meeting tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock, City Hall.
There you go. Okay. Did you hear that, Angie? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All who's in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank, thank you, Angie. In your pocket, I want to get to the, the council, the approval of the holidays for the year of 2019. You have them before you. They're in our city handbook, stating what they are. They have not been changed any way, shape, or form. So I presented the holidays for this year we're in as to what will be declared paid holidays for city employees. So is there approval to approve those holidays at this point?
Motion to accept the approval of 2019 holiday schedule.
Okay, motions on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all who's in favor of the motion, let me know. I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, always typically, we have our Utility Commission Executive Director here, Ted Chisholm. He likes to talk. He's a good talker, very friendly guy, but we have your utilities report in front of us, Mr. Chisholm, and you're always welcome to come forward if the council has any answers, but you're also welcome to come forward if you'd just like to report anything in general to the city council. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask of Mr. Chisholm? If not, he'll probably stay seated.
No, he always sends it out to us via email, and usually we have it read, and if we've got questions, we can call and ask him. We know. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted, and all the members of the Utility Commission that are here tonight, and the workers and the commission board members. Thank you all for doing what you do to serve the city in that capacity. Okay? Looks like to me, 18, LaGrange Main Street Report. Ms. Karen Eldries will come forward and give us this report.
I won't go through everything, other than welcoming you all. You have the report in front of you. The thing I'd like to invite everyone to the Chocolate crawl. Chocolate for everyone. It's a fundraiser, but it's also a wonderful time downtown. That's on February the 9th. So you can get tickets online. I'd like to see all of you there too. Yes. Now, the thing I would like to draw your attention to, in your packet, you'll see the Kentucky Main Street logo there. This is a bookkeeping thing that we need to go through for our certification. It, all it states, I'm going to be asking the mayor to sign it for me, and I wanted you to see what I, what I was asking him to sign. It states that the city agrees to work with the Main Street program and support it, and since we're in the budget, that kind of goes without saying that you're supportive. But I just, we have to be recertified every year, and it's, it's that time of year for, for me to get his signature on that. So I wanted to draw your attention to that. Also, in the report, you will see our meeting times. You're welcome to join any of our meetings if you would like. But I'd also like to invite any of you to coffee, to lunch, to dinner, whatever, so that we have a chance to, if you have questions, one-on-one, to ask me. And then, is there anything that you'd like to ask me?
As far as submission of this, does it require a council approval motion, or is it okay if I just sign it since you've given it to me?
In the past, we've done it both ways. So it's really up to this council whether they want to have it...
Is it involving any type of grants or, or partial funding for a grant, or is it just, we want to be part of the Main Street program?
We have already, you've already funded us, so it's saying that you will fund us. It doesn't guarantee that you'll fund us again, so you are not being held accountable for any money, but just that you would continue to work, that we would work together.
Okay. Well, we can just accept this as you presented, if the council, they've heard what they've heard from you, so I'll, I'll be glad to sign it for you.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Does anyone have any comments or suggestions, or for Karen? We all know our Main Street is very important. Our whole downtown's important, our whole town's important, but she's mainly looks over the Main Street program and making our downtown a vibrant, a fun city to come to.
Our, our board works to make this a, the heart of our community, so.
Okay. Nothing else? Thank you so much for making the presentation.
Thank you.
Standing committee?
Yes.
Okay, our item 19 is, is referred to as standing committee reports. Some, some administrators try to run the show by themselves the whole way, but I've always tried to... always tried to put into place committees whom I work with, I assist them with. They're not a quorum, so I typically will attend them to discuss items before them or our city, and it's not to say I won't be involved, but I want them to sort of do the findings of what the issue is, and then make sure they keep the city council fully informed of what's going on in their particular committee. So tonight, I'm going to just re, I've been so busy with everything you've heard about tonight, you know, I just, I'll start rolling these committees out as we go, but I'm only going to make one appointment to one committee tonight, and that's going to be a committee which during our campaign, I promised I would look into, and it's going to be a committee named the Historical District Guidelines Committee. This is a committee which I want them to begin to work in concert with the Historical District Commission. I want them to look at the ordinance in its entirety, the comprehensive plan of Odom County. It's to be reviewed, I want to say, every five years. That's KRS 100 state law. So this was put on the books when I was mayor the first time. I broke the tie to create the Historical District Commission. I'm a, I love preservation, but I think times change, things change, house structures change. A lot of things change, and I realize that this ordinance has been amended, new sentences put in over time, but I want a total review of the commission and what it's made out to do. In doing this, once we try to get through all these series of discussions with the public involved, I want the full city council themselves to know exactly and be informed, to be educated, every city council member here, as to what is in this ordinance. I honestly don't think that's been the case. But before we decide on the ending product, then I want to make sure this whole council is informed, being involved, of where this, these guidelines are going. Through the process, we're going to have public comments. You're going to come in and discuss what you think about this commission and this historical preservation in our town. There's nothing wrong with that, but I want to hear from you all, and they will, too. As Bill said, there's a meeting tomorrow night of the Historic District Commission. I don't know if there's anything on the agenda tomorrow night or not, other than getting together and continuing to have organizational discussions, but very soon, this committee will set their standing committee date and when they're going to be meeting, and there may be some offerings to the older mayor that will be in committee session, publicly announced, transparency, but this committee may be meeting in conjunction with the Historical District Commission, that they have six members, just to try to see perhaps where can we end up with this Historical District Guidelines. Anytime I put the committee together, I want, I do not want all three people on the committee thinking the same way. I want a lot of different opinions, and I think I've tried to do that tonight. I want to be a fair series of dialogue. I want it well publicized, and how we're going to get there. So the first standing committee I'd like to create, and they can decide themselves once I name them and they get together, when is this committee going to meet? What day, what month, what hour, and everything like that. So their name will be Historic District Committee Guidelines, Guidelines Committee, and who I want to chair that committee, the chairperson, I'll always name a chair, so that'd be the person probably that can go to a meeting without bringing them along, so we won't have a quorum or any public open meeting issues. The chair will be Mary Bolton. Mary Bolton lives in the historical district. I think she appreciates historical preservation, and I think she's a lady who will direct this and work with the other two nominees to make sure we get down the road where we need to be, and make sure our city, our residents buy into where we're going to go. The second person on that committee would be Bill Lamline. Bill is one of the founders, along with his wife, of historical preservation. There's no one that loves preservation more than Bill, and I felt he would be a good nominee of this committee.
John, I appreciate that, but I'm not sure I can serve. I am serving now as the, the staff person, volunteer staff person for that commission.
Well, in my opinion, Mr. Lamline, all due respect, I don't think any council person should be serving as a staff person to a commission that makes rules on people across the district.
I don't, I don't vote, I don't make the rules.
I know, but I want complete separation.
Then they, then they need a staff person.
Well, okay, we can do that, but I don't want, I prefer not to have council people sitting close to these committees. I'd rather that be an independent body, made up of five or six individuals, which they are, and they're very independent, all due respect, Bill. I know you love it, but if this council wishes to say that's permissible, and I'm willing to go with it, but at this time, I just don't see how a council person can stay neutral in trying to advise the commission itself as to where to go with this. I just think it's too close. Okay? Okay. So we have Mary Bolton chair, Bill Lamline, and the other lady I've chosen is Andrea. Andrea met with Andrew, she said she'd be glad to. I think Andrea, she's the only person that I'm putting on the committee, does not live in the historical district, but that's okay.
I actually do.
Oh, you do?
I live in the borough.
Oh, great, great. Well, I've got three on the Historical District Commission. So that's, that's better, Andrea. Well, thank you so much. Okay. I was thinking you lived in Woodland Lakes, but now I know where you live. You live on Birch Avenue.
I actually do.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so Andrea would be the third person to serve on the committee, and once they are appointed and set, then they hear where I would like to go, and then if we need to discuss this more in depth, I'll be glad to talk to them and discuss where we're headed. So that's the first committee, the Historical District Guidelines Committee, and they will decide when they want to meet and when they want to have their first meeting publicized to the papers. Anybody would like to make a motion of the council to approve this standing committee?
Seconded.
First and seconded by Ms. Carter, Trey Kammer. There's a motion, a second on the table. Any further discussion on the committee makeup and go to work? If not, all who's in favor of the motion on the table, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Okay. Now we're moving down to old business. When we say old business, we have two previous council folks here. They might want us to bring up something and introduce it tonight, and, or bring it back up for discussion, so, or new, or new council folks. Anyone like to speak what you would deem as old business?
I'd say that there was a lot of old business, and it takes time to get things right, so I, I think the last administration and some of the, the folks before that put in a lot of time, and so I don't have anything to present at this moment, but there's still things out there kind of hanging out for us to address, as I'm sure there'll be new things.
Okay. Anyone else? No, any old business? How about any?
Mayor, Mayor, Sumac Alley's been on the books forever. We need to bring it back, Trey, we need to get that back and get, it's all been signed and ready to go, so I would, I would like to see that come back.
Yeah, I would agree.
One of the first things.
I think that was, so we're like-minded on that, so there, there are a few alleyways that we had been in the process of trying to officially let go, and Sumac Alley was...
Well, any one of you, and I think I've heard some of the past discussions about Sumac Alley, but any one of you all, seriously, that want to bring those things to me, so I'll know about the more immediate need to get them discussed and get them finalized, I'll be glad to do it, but until you bring them up.
Sure.
I really don't know that they went on and it never has been finalized. Okay?
This one's ready to go. Just made an ordinance.
Where is that alley, Joe?
It's up, beside LaGrange Utilities.
And you says, what'd you say, it's already in ordinance, or what'd you just say?
No, it needs to be. It needs to be broad.
Close the alley?
Yes, everyone, everyone in the alley's already signed it. They signed off on it. All we need is ordinance, is that correct, Stephen?
Correct.
Yeah, we just need an ordinance to bring it before the council and...
We will have a first reading of the ordinance at our February fourth meeting.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Anything else we need to have a first reading on at our first meeting that's been hanging out there?
Maybe we'll look at some of the other alleyways. A lot of people probably don't even know that they have an alleyway. It looks like their yard, and it's been a little challenge to identify a few of them, but I'd like to bring those to your attention as well.
Trey, could you remind us where Sumac Alley is, please?
Yeah, so Sumac Alley actually does kind of look like an alley on part of it. It's, it's, like Joe said, it's right beside the LaGrange Utilities, so if you're looking at it head-on, it's to the right. A lot of people probably drop off their bill and then kind of circle on the alleyway as it is today, but it actually can, it kind of goes ahead and continues on a little bit farther and intersects Madison, I think. I don't think it's Madison. I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the name that it intersects with, but, Russell, thank you. Yes, we've, we've had a lot of discussion over Sumac Alley and some other alleyways.
Okay, I'll take that up and try to get an ordinance prepared for the next meeting on getting that alley officially closed, so that we'll be ready to go on it. Anything else that needs attention that you all know of? If not?
Just more alleys.
Huh?
Just more alleys. We got, we got one that we really need to look at and get it up before the council also, that we've got alleys that, that we still, we hadn't maintained, but when something comes up, there's always some, somebody wants something fixed in it, and it just doesn't, it's not feasible. I know it's causing, I know it caused public work some headaches, so. That, that one is off of Madison.
Okay.
In the Sixth Street.
All right.
Needs to be taken care of.
I might bring up, I came to one of the last council meetings, and we talked about Wilburn Lake. Where are we on that as far as there's an algae issue or fish dying?
Well, I know something about that. I heard about it back in the summer, went down there and looked at it, and saw exactly what you're talking about. I think the mayor, the ex, the former mayor could speak to that better than I at this point on where he left that mayor.
What was that? I'm sorry?
Uh, Wilburn Lake. She wants to know what is the situation on Wilburn Lake, and I'd say you're the one to deal with that.
We just, well, we, we tried to maintain it and keep the algae and everything off. We did, we had the pond lady, and we spent quite a bit of money, but bottom line is that lake needs to be dredged, and it's a half million dollars. So that's the last figure we got. I mean, it's just, it's too shallow, and we're, we're, we're band-aiding it, and, and the only thing that's going to fix it is to be dredged, and we looked at that. We got a price on it. We went to, they were dredging one over at, was it Goshen? Goshen, and we looked at to see what they were doing, but still, it's all about money. And it, it could even get more expensive, because we checked to see where we could, we, we had something to put what we dredged out of it, where we could put it, because when you, when you start dredging it, even a half million, when you have to haul that off or bag it or whatever, then it's going to get even higher than that. So it, it's just, so that's the reason I'd like to say, not to beat a dead horse, but that's the reason we've just been band-aiding it and get the pond lady to, to treat it and try to keep it looking nice, and, because we had some complaints from Washington Circle, you know, how, how bad it looked, and it did, but it, we wasn't the only one. It was because of the hot weather and the, and of course, ours is so shallow, too, that's, that's caused a lot more problems, so.
Okay, thank you, Andrea and Joe.
You're welcome.
What I would like to suggest at this time is make sure, and Dr. Hazelton's here tonight, and he's chairman of our Parks Board, so while we're in the winter months, if there's anything he, with the Parks Board who oversees that park, can be doing to hopefully take your suggestions, Mayor, and what really has to be done to cure this algae problem, if you can even do it. We had such tremendous heat last, last summer that it was just hard to deal with, but I always want to make sure we have the best plan we have to make that lake as accommodating to the people who buffer around it, so we will work on that, Andrea. Okay? Okay, that's all business. Any new business that anyone would like to bring up tonight at the council? Any new business that would come under new business? New thoughts? Okay. Well?
Thoughts?
Yeah, what you have, Deb.
Yeah, I do have some new thoughts. I think that we, as a city, and of course, mayor and city council, need to start working together, and I, I know Liz has the watchdog out there, and I think that's fine, as long as it's not personal vendetta, right? And that's all I'd like to say. I don't think it's fair to bring up anything about personal lives, you know? This is different here, but please try to, and I know that it hasn't been, but I'm just saying, I really think the council needs to start working together as a city, because you all are all part of this city, too, and we need you as you need us. Please feel free to call any of us, email us, text us anytime. We're here for you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Debbie. I'd like to probably echo what Debbie said, and we, you, everyone knows, we have a great town here. It's the coolest town in Kentucky, and I want it to remain that way, except be better. We've got a lot of work to do. We've got good people to help lead the way to get it there. I just want every child, every family that grows up in this town to always remember they grow, grew up in LaGrange, Kentucky. It's where I grew up. It's where I played pool on Main Street, jumped the train to ride home and jump off when I got there, ate, drank sodas every day, walking from LaGrange Elementary School to Head's Drug Store, and stayed up there and got full, and finally went home. My mother said, "Are you hungry?" I said, "Yes, I'm hungry," but I really wasn't at supper time. But that's what I want kids and everybody to remember. We've got a great city here. As Debbie said, just try to get the badge behind us. I think we're all here to work together for the betterment of the city, and I think we will do that. It's going to be fun. It's going to be exciting. We've got a lot of plans going on right now, which we're going to talk about tonight in closed session on some property acquisition to make it even a greater downtown area. So stay with us. Appreciate your attendance. Always email me, call me. Was it mayorla Grange.net, KY.net?
LaGrange.
Yes, ma'am. Or come see me. What? Please come see me or whatever, but the only announcement I have at this point, the council will meet on February the fourth, again, right here at 6:30, and you're always welcome to come and share your comments with us. We do have executive session planned for item 22, and it's under KRS 61.810B. It gives the council the, the ability to go into closed session to talk about privately acquisition of property and close through our Greenscape area that we've been, that the council, previous council been working on for a number of years downtown. The folks involved at Greenscape will be welcome to come into the city council executive session. We have to hear from them as to what they have plans and ideas to, so we can continue to try to purchase property and negotiate property in this immediate area, and that's what the closed session's about, executive session. So if the council at this time has no other announcements yourself or say anything, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session, executive session, to discuss the future acquisition of, or sale of real property by a public agency.
John, I'll make the motion to approve that we go into executive session to discuss the acquisition or sale of properties.
Motion made by Councilman Lamline. Second? Second, Trey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Before I do that, the papers, you're welcome to stay. Anyone's welcome to stay. I doubt very seriously that there's going to be any action other than some authorization given to probably me to try to negotiate property and try to bring it to fruition for this downtown landscape, skate, skate park, the green space. So with that being said, we have a motion and second. All those in favor of the motion, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all once again, and those who want to stay are welcome, too. But I don't know how long I'm going to be there, it could be a half hour, 45 minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, you're right, I know that, I don't want it.
That's moving forward, Liz. We're going to have a lot of, once we get ready to present it, that committee out here is going to have public...